Now six o'clock and I call this meeting of committee of the whole to order in council chambers. I don't believe we have any remote electronic attendance, so we start with an oath of office. Daniel Bowdre to the rank of police sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor. So I would like to call Officer Dan Bowdre up to the podium, please. Mayor, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to be here for you today and ask that you promote Dan Bowdre to the rank of Sergeant. Officer Bowdre graduated from Holloman High School, completed paramedic school at Black Hawk College in 2012. He worked as a paramedic or genesis ambulance until 2014 when he was hired by the Moline Police Department. Officer Bowdre worked in the patrol division from 2014 to 2018 while also serving two years as a field training officer and defensive tactics instructor. He was appointed to the detective division and served undercover in street crimes from 2018 to 2020. He was most recently a detective in the adult unit in the criminal investigation division. He's been on a crisis containment unit, and those of you that have been around for a while know that's our SWAT team, for six years and also serves as a team leader. We have very few officers that have held the rank of team leader, so that is quite significant to show that his leadership as an officer and now at the rank of Sergeant continue that. Officer Bowdre has received three lifesaving awards. As I mentioned to you, he previously served on the ambulance as a paramedic. And in three instances, he saved lives. In 2015, Officer Bowdre responded to a heroin overdose himself and two other officers performed CPR and the male survived. In 2016, Officer Bowdre responded to a 911 call, gave CPR, and another officer used an AED. The doctor in the ER reported that the male survived because of the lifesaving CPR. 2018, he responded to the 911 call of a male having a heart attack. Officer Bowdre performed CPR along with two other officers and the male survived and about a month later returned home. He received those lifesaving awards for all three occasions. Also, coincidentally, as you know, I notified you Friday of an incident of serious nature at 16th Street and Avenue Cities. Officer Bowdre, after he found out he was going to be promoted to Sergeant, I asked him to go back to patrol for a couple of weeks as an officer before he got promoted. He had been working that day, was the first officer on scene, and as you can hear from his resume, was instrumental in resolving that quickly. Fantastic officer, meets your standards of high professionalism as well as mine. I'm excited to offer you to promote him to the rank of Sergeant. He's here, joined tonight by his wife Casey and two daughters, Reagan and Reese, who are probably stealing the show over there. And as well as his dad Eric and his in-laws Mike and Diane DePaul. Those of you that have been around the police department for a while know Mike DePaul served 30 years at Moline Police Department, just recently retired. So he's continuing on the legacy. He's got a little bit of ways to go before he gets to that retirement age. And then most importantly, though, his aunt is the fourth. So quite a legacy of family that served the city of Moline, continues to serve the city of Moline. So I'm very proud to ask Mayor if you can forward an announcement to the oath of office.
You put your right hand on the seat. I, Daniel Bowdre.
I, Daniel Bowdre.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
Having been duly promoted to the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
The city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the file statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the file statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct of both police administration.
Any Illinois rules of professional conduct of police administration.
And that I will faithfully discard the duty.
And that I will faithfully discard the duty.
Of the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
The duty to the rank of Sergeant of the Police Department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best my.
According to the best my. Mayor, you come forward here and I'll pin your stripes on your collar. Make sure it's not a photo, I'm sure you put this stuff on a mantle for Christmas. And then I would like to invite his wife Casey forward to pin on his shirt. Invite your family forward. And we'll forego the handshakes to the council today because of COVID. But certainly, once you get up here with your tight-knit pant, we'll give you an opportunity to take some photos, take your mask off, and then we'll include this.
In the agenda, is Mayor's appointment Lindsay Smith to the revolving loan fund committee. Any questions about that? I do just want to inform the council, she's had 15 years in banking with TBK currently and currently works with small business loans. So we're excited to have her join the team. Is there any public comment this evening? No, hearing none, we will, questions on the agenda? Okay, we'll move to agenda item number one, amending chapter four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances. Ms. Christopoulos.
Thank you, Mayor. So we are proposing here an amendment to the liquor code which in effect serves as an exception to your prohibition on self-serve. This allows the creation of an option 10 to the liquor code, which is, as you know, a supplement to a liquor license. And we are recommending the creation of one of those option 10 supplements for the purpose of a self-serve area available for class A, B, and one other, I'm sorry, we did this so quickly. No, I apologize, it's just available for class B licensed. The way that here, which is what they call the self-serve areas in taverns. The way they operate is that you, as a patron, you buy or you secure your access card that allows you to enter the self-serve area and also serves as an electronic control of by monitoring what you pour for yourself. This will only be beer and wine, but the broadest definition of such. So beer is also a definition for hard cider and hard seltzer, as well as ale and other types of fermented green beverages. Wine, of course, is also a fermented beverage from food or vegetables. So it also includes hearts and kombucha.
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 Right. And other, and mead. So it does incorporate those types of beverages which forebears who wishes to open this set of establishment will offer. Among the restrictions, as you may have read, is that of course you have to come on. The access card that you obtain after you show your ID will only allow the holder to pour a one, like a one ton. If there is 16 ounces beer or beer beverage or a four ounce wine or mead. So that is, so in other words, you can't just keep that in order to use your card. Naturally, the area will be monitored. You probably see that in our proposed ordinance, monitored by not only in your fully, I mean, between, but also video monitored, which the ordinance requires the video recording to be maintained for 30 days. By the way, in front of you is a slightly amended ordinance from that which goes in your packet. The changes are the video monitoring retention as well as amended to your definition of wine to allow for need to be part of that. Your new amended definition of wine mirrors these state definitions of wine. So among other restrictions are the ability for the business to deactivate the access card. Either when the patron leaves or at the end of the day, naturally, all the other safeguards of those licensed logos, its funds, the need continue to exist. They will still have to monitor to ensure that patrons are not over served. Of course, adhere to all other provisions of the liquor code. So that is a fairly comprehensive summary of this proposed ordinance amendment. We are also asking for special consideration tonight to consider it here in town. And then twice for special consideration to fulfill both meetings required by the ordinance in my council agenda. We have the owners here today for questions on more operations. If you have them, the tip on their self-serve is kind of a trend that is, that is seen in many cities from Illinois. When we did our quick survey of other ordinances, you know, just kind of take a look. We found that most of cities that have these, actually have no regulation, no self-serve regulation. So for instance, you know, forebears is in Peoria Heights, San Antonio, maybe one other location. It's happened, those cities have just chosen not to regulate self-serve. So you had a pretty strict self-serve ordinance. So we believe that the best way to support and encourage this new business and new trend in the industry was to create the option 10.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the amendment to the code.
Second.
Motion by Elderman Wentz, seconded by Elderman Schmidt. Discussion, Mr. Wentz.
So I'm trying to understand, like, with, in the ordinance that we're talking about, the self-pour, the option 10, we talk about beer and mead as the two.
Sure.
Well, I guess that's, when, the way that this is defined, it's like all mead is wine, but not all wine is mead. So wouldn't we want to say beer as one topic or one, as with the 16 ounces, and then wine as the four ounces? Because if you're constructing this as wine is a definition and that includes what we traditionally have thought of as wine, and it also includes mead, and it includes sambuca, kombucha?
Kombucha.
Yeah, I understood that, yeah.
So, yeah, it got me nervous about saying it. But, but by, by, within the ordinance itself, you're just saying mead. You know, the Venn diagram.
There should be, what, there should be wine.
Wine, okay. So I'll make a motion that we replace any mead within option 10 and replace it with the word wine.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Elderman Wentz, a second by Elderman Timian, on replacing the word mead with wine.
Yes.
On option 10.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
So I'm all in for that, but relatedly, you had mentioned, Margaret, that we would be adjusting our definition of wine as that was added, but I don't see that in the document in front of me.
That's right, is this, what's your statute number, 23?
So it's honey and then.
Thank you, I just was missing that, that is.
All right. Any other comments on this definition? Ms. O'Brien, no?
No, I just have a question for the owners. I just, why, why is this a trend? Why are we seeing this? Because I, it's under, my understanding that there's some other, like Naperville has them, and they're getting pretty well established around the state. And I guess what I would question, it says that you're in page three that you're going to have a trade employee actively and passively monitoring. Would that be a bartender?
Somewhat, yes. So we have a full-scale bar also, full of liquor and cocktails, so we have bartenders behind there. But at the pour wall, where people are pouring their own, we have somebody stationed there for a number of reasons. Sometimes people do not pour, so we have to assist them in the pouring. And also, they're there to kind of keep tabs on how much and how things are going, that's their main responsibility. And when you're not pouring every beer, it seems to free up our staff to really check in on people and engage in conversation. So, and to answer your question on the trend, we started back in 2016, sorry, my name is Rob Matheson, I'm the co-founder.
Thank you very much, we just regret discussing that.
So we started in 2016 in Peoria Heights, and we were the first self-pour bar in all of Illinois. So nobody had ever seen this thing, and that's why Peoria Heights didn't have any language, because we were the first. And they trusted us, and we had to, we had to shake hands and agree to work hard to keep it safe and good. And since then, we've done, not only do we operate the bar, we host music events every Saturday with an average attendance of 600 people outside in a beer garden. And I'm proud to say that, you know, over the last five years, we've had 300 events and we've had the bar. We've never had one liquor citation or violation or fine from anybody, and that's in Peoria Heights or champagne. So we run a really, we're kind of like, we're different than some would be in the bar industry. We run a very organized, professional, and we really care about the communities we do business in, because that's allowed us to continue to grow. So when we, when we look to different markets, I mean, we rely on our history, very much so. So we love local history and just, you know, we just, we want to do things the right way and very professional. And I think our history speaks for itself, you know, we've, again, we're kind of looked at as the model bar in the markets that we're in. We get called upon to speak at different events and really talk through things with people. The trend itself, it's just more efficient, you know? If you're leaving the tax layer and you want a drink or two, you can get served very quickly without waiting in line. So we can rotate through quite a few people very quickly and allow people that want a cocktail to go to the bar and wait, and then people to go to the pour wall and pour. So it's just a better machine, you know, it's kind of like the assembly line of beer. And that's why you're seeing the trend continue to grow, because the ability to make better business margins is, is what happens, you know? And I'm trying to think what else I can tell you about it.
Can I ask you a question about that? So in your opinion, is it almost, or it sounds to me almost like with these restrictions on how much someone can have in a certain period of time.
Sure.
That's actually more restrictive than, say, people continuing to order bottles of wine at their table.
Right, right. It somewhat takes the human element out, because that card's going to shut off when they hit a certain amount of ounces that we set. So we feel comfortable with 64 ounces, but again, we have somebody at that wall watching. And we, we see people come in our bar routinely in champagne that have probably been drinking all day. We know, we notice those folks right away, and we, you know, we take care of those situations. So, but there's a lot of checks and balances, the card, staff members. In our, in our beer, in our product, it's not the cheapest, you know, so it's, it's specialty product, so you're going to pay quite a bit per ounce at times. But with that, we don't get people in there that are really just race car driving their way into a crazy night. Now, I'm not going to pretend that we don't ever get that, we do, but it's our job to keep an eye on that and manage it properly. And because we know we have a lot of the wine, our reputation, our liquor license, a lot of people's livelihoods, you know, our staff members and the community.
Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
Is this like a patented thing where only the forebears could do this?
I wish, I wish I was that smart. We found the technology, my partner, my business partner said no to opening bars for years. And I finally showed him the pour wall and he said, oh, I kind of like this idea. So we buy the technology from a company from California called iPourIt. And they're actually, they come in and they install it, and that's where the technology comes from. We were the first to do the technology in Illinois. And, you know, I'm kind of glad that we over, we didn't see this ordinance in Moline, because we probably would have looked other, another location. Like, this is our oversight, so we can't read very well, we might be good bar owners, but, yeah, it's kind of nice that we missed it, because we would have probably looked elsewhere because of the ordinance, and we're pretty thorough, I don't know how we did this, but here we are. So thank you for talking to us today.
Yes, we appreciate you being here.
Yeah. We're excited, I mean, Moline's been, everybody's been great, Renew Moline, Jeff, you know, Mayor, I mean, everybody's been wonderful, welcoming. We've almost finished about a $900,000 union-led project, and we didn't ask for any, any city funds. You know, we just, we just fell in love with the potential, and already what's happening here, but this town has a ton of potential. When you look at the buildings and the bridges and Rock Island or Arsenal right there, Tax Layer, I mean, we just think this is going to explode. So we're really excited to be here.
Thank you, any further questions from council? Mr. Wentz.
So you've got wine, do we, and I'm trying to pull it up real quick. For like spirits, is that differently, like for Jack Daniels or anything like that? So that would be higher liquor content, that would have to be sold at the bar and not through the self-pours, right?
Yeah, we have the full, we have full cocktails, and so, but those are protected by three or four bartenders on the Friday and Saturday nights on the bar.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We don't want to put any hard liquor on the wall, because that even scares us. That would have us fearful of what's going to happen in 20 minutes, so.
Okay, so no further questions, we need to vote on Mr. Wentz's amendment with the definition of wine. What was it, please restate it.
Replacing mead in the option 10.
Yes, the wording choice. Do you have another question?
Sorry, because it's now appearing to me there is a place where we want. I'm good, thank you, I had to thank you for.
All right, yes, Mr. Smith.
I had a question on the second page, I guess section four, item three. It says, no more than four ounces of mead per pour. Is mead like, I've never had it, I've heard of it, is it?
That's what we're replacing with.
Yeah, it would no longer say mead, it would say wine, and wine would include mead.
Would four ounces be enough for wine?
Mead is higher alcohol content.
Yes. Yeah, so would we have to change the four ounces as well?
No, that's the owners, go ahead.
Right, so according to our experts, a four ounce is a usual serve. And 16 ounces of beer is a usual serve.
Okay.
So our goal here is to allow for what you might get if you order from a person.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, hearing no further questions, all in favor of Mr. Wentz's amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes, so we're back to the motion on the floor, the amendment to our liquor code. Any questions or comments there? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much. Go over to the bar, please, have a beer. Thank you.
You'll be closed, but.
Please do stay in touch with our clerk on the proceedings for this evening. Number two, traffic signal purchase, Mr. Kullenbeck or Mr. Vita?
On behalf, happy to take it, as you know, back when we were doing the budget, we were reviewing all of the TIPS and the TIP funding that was available. This resolution before you tonight is following up to that. It's presented as a sole source purchase for traffic signal equipment for signals at both 16th Street and 46th Avenue and 16th Street and 47th Avenue. And that is to replace aged equipment difficult to service going forward. This would be with mobile trucks in the amount of $71,403.
Who to approve?
Motion by Elderman Wentz?
Second.
Second by Elderman O'Brien? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number three, Hive Consulting Agreement for Sesquicentennial. Mr. Vita.
Yes, again, this is informational, and what the staff is seeking is approval for a sole source partnership with Hive Event Consulting for our upcoming Sesquicentennial celebration in August of 2022. And this will be for their consulting services, the way the contract is structured initially is that we would work with them up to and not to exceed $5,000 in order to prepare the grant, which has a deadline, I believe, so I'll make sure I got it right. I believe that December 31st was the deadline for the grant.
You're right.
Correct? December 31st is the deadline for the grants of metal, and we'd like to get that in. And if we are successful in obtaining a grant, we would enter into a long-lasting agreement, a long-lasting relationship with Hive Consulting to help coordinate the Sesquicentennial. to help coordinate the sesquicentennial, as was elaborated last week by, I believe it was Jeff.
Tori.
And Tori. Tori did that, okay. You're right, it was Tori. A three-person team, so I want to make sure I give credit where credit is due.
All right, so our motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Timian, discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
We do have an other this evening related to this document that was at your places, I'm not sure if Ms. Whitley or Mr. Vitas is speaking.
Probably come up as well as, as well as, with the Kullenbeck guest.
Good evening, everyone, in front of you is the document. Uh, we were made aware of an opportunity to apply for a DECO grant. Uh, the project that we would like to do starts on 7th Avenue, and I'll let Joe talk about that in a little bit. But the grant is due on January 10th, and our next meeting is January 11th. So tonight, we're seeking permission to apply for the grant in the amount of $3 million.
This is a project that we've had identified, planning has looked at it, we've applied for other federal grants for it before, been denied. That, yeah, the grant we're applying for is an Illinois rebuild downtown grant, so we feel our opportunities to win this grant as opposed to a, a large federal submission are pretty high. Uh, this $3 million wouldn't cover the entire scope of this project if we did all, all things in it, landscaping, streetscaping, lighting, things like that. But this would be a really good kickstart to it, uh, give us a opportunity to get the, get the engineering done, plan, plan for how to, how to pay for the rest, or, or get the bones in anyway. And again, we're just looking for support to, to do anything necessary to, to apply for this grant and seek, seek the funding through the state.
There's 50 million available under this grant opportunity. And I think that Rock Island applies to the same grant, uh, for the downtown as well, but it's very competitive.
Um, so we need to move to approve to have discussion, because it's an other versus an informational. Ms. Constable?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Moyer, discussion? If you don't mind, I want to ask a quick question. The date on here says April 2016, does that mean this plan has already been seen by some, potentially no one actually on the council, and maybe people were here before?
But do you ever remember seeing this? Uh, yeah, it was back, and just as I was getting ready to leave, we were trying to get dollars for it, did we ever bring it to the council?
I don't know what happened, why it didn't come?
I was going to say, I, I. Well, I understand it was brought from by Jeff Anderson, city planner before, and we have applied, like I said, this is an allocation for.
So you've received, you've received permission from the council to apply for other grants for these exact projects?
Correct.
Okay. Great, thank you, sorry, Mr. Went.
So how, how does this work, I mean, there's a fairly large section seven that was just completely rebuilt. I mean, it was rebuilt poorly, but was just rebuilt. Is that going to be, how, how is that going to affect our application? Because my guess is that if we're going to do it properly, we're going to have to.
Yeah. Yeah, what was, what was redone was through the bridge project. I don't think that would affect our application or our points towards that at all. We're looking really, I mean, ideally, if we could get the whole project, if we could do the whole thing, we're going to go from 12th Street to River Drive. And we're going to go from Dog Park to the River, River Trail with pedestrian. We're going to check off, uh, what is it, 6th Avenue and 4th Avenue and 23rd Street intersections, uh, you know, coincide with our 92 corridor plan. I mean, so we're going to check a lot of boxes with this plan, I mean, that's a big wish list. And if we get that wish list and we can, we can piggyback some funding, that's going to be great, that's going to be our ultimate goal. If we've got to scale it back and use local funds to, to get what we need to get done, then, then that's what we're going to do too. But this gets us that, again, that $3 million jumpstart, there's no matching requirement to this state grant, so, so we have some flexibility in that, in the use.
Yeah, this wouldn't have been done in, in 2016, but we've done the same shorts, and one of the alternative routes that they did engineer was from 7th down through 23rd. Um, and so if you include that within this application, I think that that will help you with points, so that you've got multi-modal, and we've already spent funds to, to develop that.
Yeah, and, and this does include multi-modal all the way, and, and so, yeah, if, we piggyback and utilize that, that study as well. Again, wishlist would be great, I mean, this would be a huge project for our downtown, it would connect a lot of dots, connect trails, it would do a lot of things, so.
Okay.
And, and sorry for the late, late notice on this, this one snuck up on us, and, and, but, you know, again, have a lot of late.
So in terms of us staying focused on strategic plan initiatives, this falls under infrastructure, and it has been talked about previously. This is not a completely new thing that is just being plopped into all the other things, projects you are needing to look at.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes, thank you so much. Is there public comment at this time, chief? Out there? Okay, hearing none, we will close that meeting and move to our regular agenda, uh, regular council meeting. Pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there an invocation this evening, Mr. Timian?
No, there is not.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the whole council and executive session minutes of December 7th, 2021, and the appointment made during committee of the hall on December 14th, 2021. Resolution.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I'm so sorry. A pause. Resolutions. Councilball 1234-2021, a resolution setting an annual meetings calendar for 2022 and authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to notify the media of the annual meeting schedule.
Oh, real quick question?
Yeah.
Is that the updated one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows.
Yep. And that was saved out right after you let me know about that correction, thank you. Councilball 1235-2021, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to modify the non-union employee group benefit package to incorporate the changes that set forth in Exhibit, Exhibit A attached hereto relating to wages and health insurance premiums. Councilball 1236-2021, a resolution authorizing the chief of police to execute a sole source agreement with Interconnects for replacement of the police department's secure access control system, and for city staff to do all things necessary to implement, implement said system. Councilball 1237-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a new cab and chases from Bonnell Industries in Dixon, Illinois on Sourcewell Contract Number 080818BNL in the amount of $208,323.85. Councilball 1238-2021, a resolution authorizing the fleet and facilities manager to purchase a hook, lift, hoist, and accessories for unit number 807 from Swaploader USA Limited for the amount of $36,566.90. Councilball 1239-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a sole source independent contractors agreement with Miller Trucking and Excavating for snow removal services. Councilball 1240-2021, a resolution authorizing the director, director of utilities to purchase materials needed for construction of project number 1376, Moline Route 6, 16-inch water main crossing from Quad City Wind Water Company in the amount of $44,215.62. Councilball 1241-2021, a resolution awarding certain contracts for treatment chemicals to be used by the utilities department for the calendar year 2022, and authorizing the director of utilities to execute the necessary contract documents for purchase of said treatment chemicals and the quantities needed. Councilball 1242-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Langman Construction Incorporated for motor fuel tax section number 21-00282-00-RP, reconstruction of 34th Avenue, 53rd Street to 56th Street Place, and 56th Street Court, 56th Street Place to the dead end for an amount of $784,310.18.
Your Honor, I move to approve consent agenda, second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went, roll call, please.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes, non-consent agenda resolutions. Councilball 1243-2021, a resolution authorizing interim city adminis, I'm sorry, city engineer to execute a sole source purchase of traffic signal equipment for signals at 16th Street and 46th Avenue, and 16th Street and 47th Avenue from Ro, I'm sorry, Movotrucks for the amount of $71,403.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Councilball 1244-2021, a resolution approving a sole source contract with Hive Consulting for sesquicentennial celebration consulting services in the amount of 13.4% of the total event budget, based on grant funding received.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Macias, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Councilball 1245-2021, a resolution authorizing the IT manager to purchase a Trimble R12 GPS system from Precision Midwest in the amount of $28,817.54.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went, discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Councilball 3038-2021, a general ordinance amending chapter four of the Moline Code of Ordinances, alcoholic liquor, to create a self-pour option and exception to the prohibition of self-service of alcoholic liquor to allow for the self-pour of beer and mead in, are we changing that to wine at this time? Sorry. Beer and wine in specially licensed establishments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Timian, seconded by Alderman Went, discussion?
And that's actually.
And that's as of that.
Thank you so much.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer, discussion? Hearing, yeah, yes.
Is this in the final vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Wait.
I, I mean, it's like the.
Motion. Is this, is, so this is just.
This is the final reading.
Just get the, the first reading is consideration?
That's right, so the first vote, vote was, in essence, the consideration to move on to the final.
And I want to thank the clerk for doing your due diligence and checking with master clerks to make sure that this process was legit.
Yes, thank you.
I love legit.
We are legit.
Appreciate it.
All right, much appreciated, yes. So any further discussion? All right, uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. First reading of Councilball 3039-2021, an ordinance amending chapter four and five of the Moline Code of Ordinances to increase the number of video gaming terminals per licensed premises, and to further regulate video gaming and liquor license classifications, including increasing terminal operator fees, classifying license classification, clarifying license classifications, and introducing a flexible cap on the number of Class B video gaming licenses. And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you. I, I need to confer with the clerk a second.
You do?
Because the clerk may be sick. I'm sorry. Thank you, that is why. I'm sorry, so it's just motion for executive session. Yes, well, no, we have miscellaneous business, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Williams?
Dustin, your honor.
Macias?
Uh, yes, your honor, um, we, actually, Alderman, Scott Williams, and myself were invited to the Florissanta Neighborhood Association holiday party at the Esperanza Center, and, and it was, it was great to see the, actually, that, that organization really be connected. They actually took a survey of the attendees, they were asking them what their priorities were for the neighborhood. Um, and they basically were pretty well organized and had a good time too, they had Santa Claus, they had food. Um, I just wish more neighborhoods would have little parties like that and would invite us. And we're going to be judging some of the lights, the Christmas lights in the neighborhood. So, yeah, we're going to have a tough task to the side.
You're going to make one friend and a lot of enemies.
Yes, I think that's what's going to happen, so. Just wanted to share, it, it was a great time, and, yeah, I encourage other, uh, uh, other neighborhood associations to do events such as this.
I think they're just trying to rib someone, yes, Mr. Williams?
Santa taught us a secret about you, Alderman Waldron.
Well, I do. I, I do also want to commend you on your team spirit this evening, mine is in the car. But thank you to the Moline Parks Department for offering these fun sweaters. Um, thank you, Mr. Went.
Yeah, uh, thank you, your honor. Driving down along John Deere Road, uh, you know, this is the time of year with holiday shopping and, and those sorts of things. Um, you know, when we're kids, those parking lots were overflowing with, with cars, the mall, those sorts of things. Um, that's not necessarily the case right now, um, and I've talked with some developers, people who would like to uh, invest along John Deere Road, but they've talked about limited number of spots being available. What, what I'd like to do is, uh, uh, have us review our parking requirements, the number of slots that we're requiring, especially along John Deere Road, but, uh, I guess maybe that's where we'll start, uh, and in the mall and, and in those areas and along 16th Street. Um, and I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to review that and come back to us in the next two months with, uh, proposals on how to tweak our parking requirements, um, in the future.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer, discussion, Mr. Went?
Yeah, I, I think that this may wind up resulting in a few more developable areas where currently our ordinance requires that they've got to have so many spots, and they are just spots that are out there that nobody ever parks in, but there may be a, a, a ability for something to be developed out there and improved and increase our tax base.
Mr. O'Brien?
Just some clarification, what part of John Deere Road are you talking here, the whole thing?
So like, I mean, if you look at, uh, like Farm and Fleet, I mean, they've got, uh, the biggest parking lot in the world, I have I don't remember the last time I saw that entire parking lot, Lowe's. Um, I mean, there, there's a number of those, the mall, um, there's a number of requirements because it's just a calculation on our square footage that our ordinance requires them to have, that honestly, they don't need. Uh, we've already provided infrastructure there, uh, all of those things are already there, so if we're able to do infill, um, development there, the cost to the city is almost nothing, but it increases the tax base and is, is an availability for those areas to be better utilized.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Vitas would like to speak, and then Mr. Moyer?
Yeah, no, I, we're more than happy to actually take that study on, um, and the reason, for the reasons stated. You know, my, my experience in other cities, uh, both those that are prospering and those that are struggling, is that parking restrictions or parking requirements based on square footages of these commercial spaces often create islands of asphalt. And those islands of asphalt sit there, they fall into. And those islands of asphalt sit there, they fall into disrepair eventually. They're really not used that much. Um, you know, a- a good example here locally was, you know, where the former Gordmans is located at. And when they- when they approached us about redeveloping that site, parking was the issue they came to the meeting. Because based on our parking requirements, uh, and our landscaping requirements, they could give us in order to try and subdivide this outlot and create this outlot. You know, it's either the parking spaces or you give up the parking spaces for the, uh, the landscaping improvements, but you can't have both. It won't work, you know, and- and that was the challenge that they presented us with and we're still working with them on that. Because we really would like to see Harbor Freight locate there, because that's who wants to go. Other experiences along state routes that I've, in cities that I've run into, you know, whether it's, uh, Home Depot or Costco or Sam's Club, those massive parking lots, they serve, you know, very specific purposes on certain days of the year and only certain days of the year. And then they sit empty. Lot of commercial retailers who own these properties or REITs that own these properties. You know, when they acquire them, they also plan for the future that the frontage where the parking is at, those become the future outlots for new development to take place. So I think, I think very much so, we need to look at that, especially around the mall. I'm not that familiar with the John Deere Road and what's available. I know there's some big parking lots out there as well, but down by the mall, this is certainly an issue that we need to study carefully. So, I- I support that and endorse that a hundred percent.
Mister Moore.
Well, thank you. I- I think Mister Vita said what I wanted to say in a much better way, with actually more information. I mean, we are in a changing economy and this is a great tool for our development team. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, hearing, anything else? Uh, all right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that motion passes. Anything else under miscellaneous?
Um, yeah, um, the other was, um, a while back, and I don't have, I think it was maybe in August, we had talked about tiny homes and ADUs and- and kind of moving that along. And, uh, had come up with a- a timeframe. I think I passed out a memo to everybody. Um, the- the pushback was, well, we don't wanna have a specific timeframe. Um, and so we had, so what we landed on was that staff would come back to us by November second with a timeframe, um, to- to pass this and- and bring it back to us. As a reminder, back in twenty nineteen, we had provided this to- to staff. Ob- obviously COVID came through and, but this has been hanging out there for a very long time. We're still sitting without a timeframe. Uh, nothing came back in November, we're now to the end of December. And we still don't have a- a process. I know that now we have, uh, um, uh, a leader of our, uh, economic development department, so I appreciate it. But I would like to reiterate that we would like, and I guess I'll move to direct staff to come back by February fifteenth, um, with, um, a recommendation, one way or another, so we can move this forward on tiny homes and ADO- ADUs, uh, with our ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, motion of Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Discussion? I do recall recently seeing an email stating that, uh, you know, uh, our city planner's been reminded that that is, um, to be taken up and I believe it's coming up on the docket for the Plan Commission in January. Um, and so, given that they'll have one, maybe two meetings before your February fifteenth um, ideal, uh, timeline, I- I just pose that as, is that enough time? Do they need that deadline? Or is it enough for you to know that this will be on the January, um, Plan Commission agenda? Yes, Mister Went.
My concern is, we have, since this has all been going on, we've canceled Plan Commission meetings, so it.
Right, and that was because.
Going on for.
I understand.
Extremely long period of time.
I, uh, just as a reminder to the council, our planner, uh, only came on board in what date?
Probably two months ago.
Right, and so, given time to adjust and get to know the area, I mean, this is, um, partly why the comment was made about specific timelines. So now that he's been here and knows that it's on the docket or needs to be on the docket, I expect that we will see something. I just offer that as a reminder information. Yes, Mister Went.
And to that point, if- if they come back with, hey, we need this timeframe, that's totally fine. But what I was told was, well, we'll work on it and have something, uh, started by the end of the first quarter, which, that could be the end of March. And so, I think that it's appropriate that I- I believe there's, uh, uh, enough support on this council that we want to move this forward. And we just need to see some movement.
Yes, yes, Mister Vita.
Uh, just for clarification, because I wasn't here in nineteen, and I have not seen much of anything on this subject in the files. So, you know, in some respects, we are kinda starting at a scratch point. There was a little bit of work done by a previous member of staff and then it stopped when they left. Um, so we're gonna re- of course, we're resurrecting that file. But in my reading, you know, of similar projects in different parts of the country, and I believe I shared one of those with you, if I'm not mistaken. You know, you have tiny home villages where it's literally the entire development is tiny homes as opposed to tiny homes as infill development within existing residential areas where they don't necessarily fit. So, we're gonna need some real clarity in terms of what we're looking at in terms of tiny homes, because some community neighborhoods are gonna say, no way. They're just gonna say, we don't want that in our neighborhood. And then you'll have areas that are undeveloped and, you know, like down in Tampa, Florida, I think that was the example I shared. You know, where they have tiny home villages and they have these little, you know, five hundred, six hundred square foot homes, you know, that get built and they usually get brought in, really. They get rolled in most of the time. They're not, you know, they're not stick-built on-site oftentimes. So, you know, it's har- it's hard to understand what we, when we say tiny homes, what we're- we're really thinking of. You know, 'cause we weren't here for those discussions back in nineteen or in twenty. What does it mean?
Yes, Mister Went.
Well, a- and- and- and that's part of the things that was in that model ordinance that I provided, that the Plan Commission has already looked at. And we have within our code, um, uh, infill ordinance where you can have a smaller, um, lot size if it's an infill lot. We also have issues, and I think we're okay with this, so, 'cause I don't think we've adopted yet, but the buil- building code on minimum square footages, those are the things that need to be looked at. Because we have in Moline, and we all know that there are lots out there that have sat empty and undeveloped for years. They're just empty lots. Sometimes they're taken care of, other times they're just an area within a neighborhood that collect a bunch garbage and plastic bags that float around and- and things don't get mowed and Brad winds up chasing his tail trying to get people to mow them.
Yeah.
And so, that's, those are the things I'm talking about. And- and- and absolutely, there- there needs to be discussions on the tiny home on if they're going to do a larger development and, uh, what the lot sizes of those need to be. But it's also the- the element of the ADUs. That's something that can be done much quicker. Uh, there's lots of examples of, uh, the, uh, accessory dwelling units out there that aren't the issue of the lot size and- and those sorts of things. It's having the ability of that second unit converting a garage into a unit so you can have, you know, an elderly parent to come and live there or a kid that hasn't, um, graduated from college yet or- or said vocational school or whatever those- those things are. But these are ways, we keep talking about that we want to have affordable housing in Moline. We want to help people increase the value of their property, to increase the EVA, to increase the density, to increase the population here. This is how you do it without bankrupting the city of building all sorts of new infrastructure and roads out into cornfields that you can do this and increase the quality of life and the, um, the economic vitality of our residents. And so, this needs to get moved.
Okay, Mr. Timian.
Just as a- as it's an example, there is a house, uh, in the fourth ward that, uh, during the derecho last year, uh, a tree fell on it, split it in half. And it's an older home, smaller home. As a result, it doesn't meet, to rebuild it, they can't, 'cause it doesn't meet current building standards. Just the lot size is too close to the neighboring home, other issues like that. So this would help resolve these issues too. And we have a lot of older homes here that likely cannot be redeveloped for this very reason. So I think there's a, this could take care of a lot of issues.
Is there, is there an inventory, again, I'm gonna ask the question, if you've seen it and if you haven't, is there an inventory of all these lots and these locations throughout the city that somebody developed? Because what we're looking for is a, is a, it's a very big study. I mean, this is not just, you know, we can do a cursory overview and just go yes or no. You know, and send it off to the Planning Commission and- and have them talking about it in January and February. But I- but I think there's a lot of meat to this discussion. It's a big topic, whether you're talking accessory dwelling units. You know, does your code allow for that today? Does it not allow for it? A lot of codes do, right? And that's a simple change. That's really not a study or an analysis. That's really a policy decision and a recommendation coming forward from your Planning Commission, you know, to- to City Council. But the whole issue of tiny homes and introducing a new housing inventory into the community, I think takes a lot more research.
Mister Went.
Yeah, a- and I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
And- and part of my frustration is e- exactly that. The ADU thing, it's a policy that this council, again and again, has said that we want done.
Yeah.
But it has been somehow lost through the cracks. And we do have the ability and we, but I- I want to work with the Plan Commission because that's the typical process. But our code allows for, if we wanted to just bring it up and move it forward and do it, we can do it. And I've talked to you, I'll draft it. I mean, if- if- if staff isn't, if if there isn't interest in- in moving this forward, I know that there- there's enough elected officials here that we will move it forward. And so, if we don't wanna go through the traditional route, that's all I'm saying is, if I don't see progress on that, then we'll just do it here. And I- I don't want to do that. I think that there is value in getting more eyeballs on it, more thought, going through those processes. But if it takes four years to do a simple, uh, uh, policy change that this council and the council before it have all said they want done, there's something wrong with the process.
So let's, um, consider, you have a sample ordinance. Has our planner seen it? I know you've shared it with him and with Mister Vita and with this whole council. Has our new, newest planner seen it?
I'm not his boss, I have no idea.
I don't know. When did- when did we receive the, uh, ordinance?
August.
Oh, I- I forwarded it.
All right, so I think that we definitely have to start there and then certainly talking about getting it on the agenda. I think it's good for us to see what the conversation is on, I believe it's January eighth.
January eleventh.
January eleventh, no, January twelfth is the next Plan Commission meeting. Uh, let's see what that, and then, you know, any point after that, it could be brought forward on an agenda, but we definitely need to just triangulate the conversations about that. But anyway, this is a motion on the table with a timeline, with a deadline of February fifteenth. So, is there any further discussion, Mister Schmidt?
Just a question of clarifying, are we, so you're asking for motion forward at, by that time? And if that's report back on exactly, we took it to the Planning Commission, we did this, that is what we're looking for?
Yeah, okay. It can be thumbs up, it can be thumbs down, it can be some, just something.
Yep. All right. Uh, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Set it?
Yeah, I had one other quick question. I- I know that we had, uh, gotten an email that said that there was a- an explanation of where we are with broadband posted on our website. Did that also go out as a press release?
It can.
I- I- I'm just, I- I'm trying to understand, there's some things that we do for press release. This is the first time I've heard of us not doing a press release and only, uh, posting it to our website. What's, where do we make, 'cause I- I think that this council a couple of months ago had asked for a press release to go out. And I'm just trying to understand where we draw that line and why we make the decisions not to do a press release and only do a posting on a website that only if you know that page is there, do you check it?
Um, do we know if, I can let you answer that, but do we know if it went on on Facebook as well? 'Cause usually Mister Brack posts to.
Well, I will check and see, see where it's at, but the- the direction was to get it done. We got it done. And with the little time that we had, I said, get it posted immediately and then follow-up, of course, is to release it. So, you know, we raced to get that done.
Okay.
We can a- ask him to release it tomorrow. Is it press release?
Not an issue.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Mister Timian.
Thank you, your honor. I, um, I live not far from the intersection of, uh, Twenty-third Avenue and Sixteenth Street. And there was, uh, quite the, uh, police presence there, uh, over the last week. And I did just want to publicly thank the Police Department for the professionalism in which they handle uh, situations that require, uh, mental health care and, uh, go above and beyond. It is not in your job description. But I- I have seen time and time again, not just in my own family, but in other people in the community, the police, uh, in Moline see everyone as people, not just as problems. And i- it's- it's very evident. I just wanna talk to you.
Mister Moyer?
Thank you, your honor. Um, I just shout out real quick to the library. Um, they've, it seems like every month they're continuing to roll out some new, uh, resource. And recently, they've, they've got a storybook collection now that's in I don't know how many languages, like sixty languages or more. I get that wrong. But it's really wonderful. You can log on with, uh, as a member of the library, you can log on and, uh, and- and choose a language and just choose tons of stories. And so, um, my daughter is- is loving it and, you know, a- a- anybody who wants to use a foreign language, it's just a really wonderful resource. Um, and they're also in the midst of their annual fund drive, so make sure I point that out as well. Donate to the library, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mister O'Brien.
I'm gonna keep an open mind about the tiny homes, but I'm gonna need some real hard conversion here. I, from what I've seen of it, I- I don't like it, uh, but maybe I'm not the vote you were counting on. Yeah, I'm guessing I probably wasn't, but, uh, we can chat. We- we can chat about it.
Thank you. Mister Waldron.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, 'cause we don't see you until the new year. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Mister Schmidt.
Nothing, your honor.
I have only one item. Uh, that is that I was on the quarterly call with the Quad City Health Initiative, um, this morning. And I think it's fairly significant when the head of a major hospital system says, I don't know what I have to do to get people's attention about the COVID situation here in the Quad Cities. It's dire, um, in terms of a pandemic of the unvaccinated. And he had stats for us to- to prove that. Um, he said, in a night alone, all five beds in the ICU are full and there are six people in the emergency room waiting for beds and they're all COVID positive. And if they're not able to get them here, they have to be shipped out to other places that do have an ICU bed. Um, and so, the other data we were given was this is the second highest surge since the pandemic has happened. Um, it's, um, the worst situation for ICUs, it's worse now for ICUs and emergency departments now than it was last year because it's the Delta variant, which makes people sicker. Um, and so, I just wanna, um, let you know that there- there will be another push publicly by those healthcare professionals and potentially by some local municipal leaders, um, uh, in the coming days. Um, just to remind everyone to- to- to do what they can to mitigate, according to what we know helps mitigate in terms of vaccinations. Rock Island County is only fifty-six point eight percent fully vaccinated. Um, so, that's information for you and that you will see coming out in the next few days, I believe. Um, Mister Vita, anything from you?
Just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Uh, we've got a three-week hiatus between this meeting and the next, and we will take full advantage of it. We've got a lot of planning going on and a lot, a lot of, uh, behind-the-scenes, hard work being done by the staff at all levels in order to advance the strategic plan for next year, uh, to launch the fiscal twenty-two budget as well as an action plan to address all of the activities that will take place, uh, that have been approved by this council. So, as we come forward, you'll have a good idea as to how busy each department is going to be and to continue to be. and to continue to be throughout the upcoming year. And, uh, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Any other staff? Hearing none, we do have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating matters five ILCS one twenty-two C two.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went, roll call please.
Alderman Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Okay.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
We need, um, one more, right, one more section.
We'll have to do, we'll just have to do another.
Margaret told me that was collective bargaining.
Uh, we need, we need also for second.
Okay, it doesn't fall within that? Okay.
No, so, if there are another motion.
Yeah, we'll do a second motion to keep it clean.
A second motion, Your Honor.
No, you know what, we, we need to take this roll call.
Okay.
Where, where we?
Yeah, we're done. Motion passed.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, who, who was the second on that, Alderman Went?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so the second item or second motion is.
The second motion, Your Honor, an executive session would be for appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, five ILCS one twenty-two C one.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went, roll call please.
Alderman Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Motion passes.